I'd like to welcome you to the September School Board Meeting. Still pretty warm out there for approaching fall. Board, you've had the agenda for the meeting tonight. Dr. Rollins, any changes, additions, or comments?
The agenda was planned as presented, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Creek and a second by Mr. Hutchinson. Approve the minutes of the agenda for the board meeting tonight. All those in favor?
Aye.
Host. Board, you've also had the minutes from the previous meeting. Are there any changes, corrections, or questions from the minutes from the previous meeting?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Cook and a second by Mr. Luttrell to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Host. This is the time for patron comments. If you have any comments, questions, or concerns to address to the board, just come to the podium. Tell us who you are, state your complaint, comment, question. Just understand we cannot take action on those items tonight, but we would certainly welcome any comments, questions, or concerns. And if there are none...
Board, it's a pleasure for me to invite Ms. Sidney Burkett to the microphone. Sidney, if you'd come forward and lead us in the pledge, and then I'll introduce her to our board and to the audience after we...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sidney, we're very pleased to have you with us this evening. Sidney is our representative from Springdale High School. She's a sophomore. Her parents are Scotty and Evelyn Burkett, who are both Springdale High School graduates as well. Sidney, this is pretty impressive. I'd like for the audience to listen closely at the classes this young woman is taking. AP Chemistry, Advanced Placement Chemistry, Advanced Placement Geometry, World History, Agriculture Academy, English, Agriculture, Electricity, Agricultural Mechanics. You can see she's an active FFA member. She's a member of the SHS Poultry Judging Team, the Color Guard, and the Conduct of Chapter Team. Sidney competed at the Arkansas State FFA Convention. Her pig, Otis, will compete at the Arkansas Oklahoma State Fair, really just in a few days, right? She plays volleyball and softball for Springdale High. It is such a pleasure to see you. We're glad to have you here this evening. Any comments you'd like to share with the board about your year, or your FFA, whatever you want to talk to us about?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Dr. Rollins. I am from Springdale High School. I love all the teachers and the students. Everyone is so kind and helpful. If you don't understand something, they will help you and have you work through it. Sports has always been a passion of mine. I currently play and enjoy volleyball and softball. I enjoy competing, and sports has helped me stay in shape and develop a positive self-image. I joined FFA to challenge myself and to stand outside my comfort zone. FFA has given me opportunities and allowed me to discover and find new passions. FFA has helped me discover swine and showing. A year ago, I had no interest in pigs. I didn't know about them or anything. And through a lot of hard work and a lot of frustration, I have grown to love working with swine and taking care of them. Showing pigs has taught me to work through difficult times and develop patience and understand animal husbandry. Additionally, the Agriculture Academy has helped me make new friends and focus on career options post-graduation. Are there any questions?
I'm curious, after reading that list, when do you sleep?
Well, we...I sometimes get home late from volleyball or softball. So it's around like 10:00, and then I have homework. So that's normally around 11:00. So from like 11:00 to 5:30 in the morning, because we have to show up early for volleyball.
Typical life of a teenager. Well, that's great. Your accomplishments and what you're doing are fantastic. Good job.
Thank you.
What made you decide swine? What made you just...and then what made you decide to name it Otis?
Well, I chose swine because I wanted to get more into the...more into agriculture. And my cousin Chad Burkett and Ms. Pennington, they helped me decide what animal I would choose. And since they know more about pigs, I decided to go with pigs, so I would get a little help. And Mr. Jones and Mr. Mayberry helped me decide, and they also helped me through what to feed them and how to work with them. And yeah.
So what are your career aspirations after high school?
My career aspirations are I would like to go to the University of Arkansas to major in pre-vet and minor in animal science. And then after that, I would like to go to OSU for vet school.
That's great. Are your parents here tonight?
Are my parents with?
Parents here tonight?
Yes, they are.
Can you have them stand up?
Oh, my mom's here.
There we go. Thank you for being here. It seemed like a well-accomplished, well-spoken young adult.
Thank you.
Glad to have you here.
Thank you, Sidney. Our athletic director, Mr. Wayne Stellics, here. Wayne, if you would come forward with a very special recognition.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Rollins, Cynthia. It's another time to celebrate a championship by one of our student athletes, Coach Matt Hervey. If you'd introduce our winner, our champion.
Thank you. Well, thank you all for giving us the time to come here and recognize this. I want to take this and let you all pass it down. This is our state championship, Randy.
Very nice.
Did I tell you some of the stuff that she's done? Her junior year last February, she finishes the 6A, the largest classification in diving, state champion for Springdale. As we currently go, she is on pace to tie the all-time Springdale High School record with medals. That's assuming we do good this year, no pressure. But if she does that this year, she'll leave the most decorated swimmer in Springdale High School history. Our hope this year, our main goal this year, is to be Arkansas Diver of the Year, which sets that across all levels. She's also a two-sport athlete. She's always busy. We were talking about this little one before, just she dances for Springdale High School and Coach Gillespie. She also has a job. She dives. Is there anything else I'm missing?
Schoolwork.
Yeah, at school. She fits that in there somewhere. But I just want to thank you all for doing this. I want to thank all the administration from all my feeders, George Lakeside, SOI, Springdale. I'm now with Dr. Davis at Archer. I want to thank all them, because without them, being flexible and making this happen. Is there anything? She doesn't want to talk, so I want you to get her. You can ask her whatever she'd like, future intentions.
I have a question. I see the shirt. Is that a precursor of what you're going to do?
Hopefully, yeah. I've been talking to the coach, so we'll see.
So how did you get into diving? What made you...have you always liked to dive?
No, I was a gymnast for 11 years, and then I had a lot of injuries. So it was just an easy transition with like flipping. So it was nice, but it was different because I had to go in on my head instead of my feet. So there was a lot of smacking.
As far as...so if you go to Alabama, let's say you dive, what would be your major? What do you think you might try to study?
I want to major in pre-law or pre-med and then minor in Spanish.
Great.
We'll see. Hopefully that works, but...anything else?
Great accomplishment.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We look forward to watching you this year. Awesome achievement. I told her one of the last thing I want her to do before we...I want her to be so far ahead that on her last dive, she'd be cannonballing still win. She's got to leave no doubt, like I can just mess this whole thing up, you know? And as a proud coach, I want to make sure to recognize, Colleen, raise your hand. She's one of my divers, Matthew Tatum, please. Not still their thunder, but they're part of the yells thing tonight, and they're a couple of my swimmers as well. Thank you all again, I appreciate it.
Good luck.
Board, as you know, we've had the back-to-school rally in place for a number of years in our school district. For the last couple of years, we've been out at the ballpark. I really believe we had 5,000 or more people just from our schools there, hundreds of young people. We had 50 school partners on display in that event. In my view, it was quite a celebration. For those of you who were able to be there and sharing that, it was a great event. Any comments anybody would like to make about that? How about throwing out the first pitch?
That was an interesting way of doing it.
I don't think that's happened too often. Too many curveballs in the spring, Randy, to do this. But it was fun. It really was. We're prepared for our focus session, and I know how much each of you enjoy that. Let's go back for just a minute as we give just a little set to this and remember the work that we've done to try to move more and more innovative practice into our schools. At our board meetings throughout this past year, our prior year, we looked at George Kuros and his attributes of the innovative mindset, et cetera. Come forward to this year, and we had Don Wetrick as our keynote speaker, very special teacher, again, promoting, advocating, modeling innovative practice. And tonight, we're going to look at Wetrick's focus on innovative practice, and we're going to talk about collaboration. And are you a keynote? You're going to get a start?
Absolutely.
Martha Dodson will be our host for this.
Good evening, and thank you, Dr. Rollins, for that. Our focus session tonight, the staircase of education is an integral part of the work that we're doing. And as Dr. Rollins mentioned, Don Wetrick provided our back-to-school PD this year. Wetrick's pure genius has developed six building blocks of innovative learning. And as he mentioned, our focus group's concentration tonight is on the building blocks of collaboration. As it says, to look farther than the person beside you. We do our students a disservice when we prepare our students for a world that no longer exists. And we fail to empower them with the skills and the abilities that they need to navigate rough and shifting waters. We don't need students who can build bubbles on a multiple-choice test. We need students who can create, innovate, connect, and collaborate. We need students who can identify and solve real-world problems. Changing the way we educate students is not only necessary, but it's our moral imperative. Through this model of collaboration, it totally flips the classroom management style. Students are in charge of the learning, and the teacher remains available for support, guidance, and assistance. Literally, the teacher works for the students, and the students bring the value to the classroom. The job becomes helping students achieve their goals. So the first one to introduce tonight is Ms. Stacy Ferguson from Turnbow Elementary. They're going to be the first group to talk about our focus session.
All right, thank you, Dr. Dodson, and welcome. Thanks for having Turnbow Elementary here tonight. So tonight, I invited Ms. Hannah Olson, our fifth-grade teacher, along with three of her former students, Sidney Ferguson, Nyla Shap, and Bricia Trevino. And they're here to talk tonight just about the process that they followed as they prepared for their IB exhibition back in May. So you're going to be able to see how the exhibition relates directly to Wetrick's blueprint of what an innovation classroom looks like. And I put those bullets here of what he outlines in his text for us. So it has to be project-based, passion-based course. Students research a topic of their personal interest. The students can work either individually or in a group, and these girls chose to work in a group of three. They must collaborate with an outside expert to gain knowledge and experience. And I think as they reflected, and we talked last week, that would be where they would go next if they were to do it again. Students must submit a project proposal with the standards, a timeline, and an approximate fair point value. He encourages them to blog or vlog about the results weekly during their class. And Wetrick asks students to present their projects to key stakeholders, turn in a reflection, and to negotiate for their grade. And you'll see some pictures in the slides in a moment of them presenting to their key stakeholders. So when I read these components from Wetrick, I immediately thought of the work that our fifth-grade teachers and students do as they prepare for their IB exhibition.
Okay, I'm Hannah. I was these lovely girls' teacher. So we started our exhibition process by allowing students time to brainstorm. So we talk about a social issue, and they fill out this graphic organizer. So they think of a global issue, and then we try to bring it in smaller and smaller as we go. So we think globally, in our country, within our community, within our school, within our families, and then with our personal lives. And so I encourage them to think smaller as we're brainstorming. And then in order to promote student agency, I let them pick their groups that they wanted to work in, and they also got to be in control of what their research topic was. So they're going to tell you more about it.
Our group came up with global warming as our topic. Ms. Olson helped guide us into bringing it smaller from the umbrella of global warming down to deforestation. Through our research we conducted, we formed three driving questions. Why did deforestation start? Where is deforestation happening? And what does deforestation affect? These three questions are what guided our research.
We each took a driving question and researched to find the answer. From that, we created slides for our digital presentation and also collaborated to make a poster. Ms. Olson allowed us to choose what multimedia outlet we wanted to use to share our information. We invited all of our friends and families, all of our families and members of the community to our exhibition and shared our findings with them.
We encouraged our audience to take action to prevent deforestation by starting protests, start to plant trees, start recycling if they aren't already, buying recycled products when they are shopping, and protecting trees around them. Our favorite part of this was being allowed to choose who we worked with, what topic we wanted to learn more about, and choosing how we would research and present the information. Next up is Dr. Regina Stuman from Sonora Elementary.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. So when Wetrick, and in reading his book, and when he shared his passion with us at the back-to-school meeting, especially in this area of collaboration, I immediately thought of Mrs. Spurlock and last year's compassion project that they did. It is a perfect example of that looking farther than the person beside you. Or, in other words, looking outside of the classroom walls, outside of the school walls. And Mrs. Spurlock is a master at providing these opportunities for her students beyond the classroom walls, which really provides them with an audience that's a real-life audience, not just my teacher looking at it, as well as giving them experiences to apply their learning. And she's really a model teacher at doing that for others in our building. So with that being said, it's an honor to introduce Ms. Spurlock and her students to talk about their project.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Dr. Rollins and the board members. To continue our school's work with conscious discipline, my class last year was working through Scarlett Lewis's Choose Love movement. One of the steps in choosing love is compassion in action. I asked the students what they were passionate about and who or what they would like to help with. The students generated ways in which we could show compassion in action. From that point on, they took the lead. I was just there to help and when they needed me. They determined what they wanted to do to help kids in the community, and then they researched different organizations that they might want to help. They communicated with the Children's Safety Center to see what they could do to impact the children that were served by the center. The students formed their own committees based on their interests and their talents, including a communications committee, an advertising committee, collection and organization, and bookkeeping. They collaborated with the center, Ms. Emily Fisher, Dr. Stuman, and myself to come up with a way to involve our entire school and also out into the community. They also reached out to others that work with the center to help make their plan to show compassion in action. Not too far into the project, we realized that the Children's Safety Center was already partnered with Sonora Middle School East, which meant my students could continue this partnership and collaboration as they moved on to middle school. The current slide showing now shows an example of a flyer that gave the details of what we did, and it's an example of what one of the committees, the advertising committee, created to spread the word across our grade level, the school, and the community. I would like to introduce Joel Rodriguez and Guadalupe Granados. They are my previous fifth graders and currently sixth graders at Sonora Middle School, and they are going to share the why behind our project and how it impacted them.
We collaborated with Ms. Emily at the Children's Safety Center because we wanted to take action and not feel bad for the kids at the Children's Safety Center. We wanted to help in our community.
Collaborating with others besides our classmates impacted me because it made me think more outside of the box. It gave me freedom to decide on what I wanted to do, work with, no, what I wanted to help them with and what I can help them with. I feel grateful because my family doesn't have to go through this and just thinking kids older than me and younger than me can go through this every day. It makes me feel sad and motivates me to help them and others.
So that's just an example of one, but already because of the experience in the building and what have the impact that we saw on our students, these types of projects will continue at Sonora, extending into other grades as well as school-wide. And one perfect example that's showing on the screen right now is Ms. Harp, our school counselor, just received funding within the last two weeks to show compassion in our community while also teaching economics. Dr. Rollins, yes. Students will design, print, market, and sell T-shirts. They will in turn use that fund, the funds made from that, to fulfill a need in the community that they identify. The shirt sales will also allow for the company that they develop to be self-sustaining. And the first round of shirts has completed, and we'd be honored if the school board would be the first recipients of those. And so Ms. Spurlock will hand those out. And as she does that, I would like to welcome Dr. Dodson back to the microphone to continue with Sonora Middle School. Thank you all.
Thank you so much. At SMS, as in Springdale School District, all means all. That means personalized learning opportunities for all students. I have with me tonight Jordan Scott, which is our SECIA, Kel Reynolds, and Kira Hibbs. And we're going to show a quick video and then maybe have some questions for them about their project called The Busy Bean.
Good morning. How are my ladies this morning?
One green dollar.
What?
Green, one green dollar.
You need a dollar? Okay, all right, coffee. Thank you so much. Did you make it special for me, just like I like with vanilla? Thank you. And this is the best part. I get a cup with my morning coffee. You are awesome. Thank you so much. Oh, a dollar fifty. Oh, wow. So this is how...
Can you tell me what it is?
It is, it is. We've...it was crafted by me and Kel.
Hey, come on in. Iced coffee?
Iced coffee.
All right.
We're here to deliver your coffee.
Is it just how I ordered it? Perfect. How much do I owe you?
Oh, one fifty.
A dollar fifty.
Hello.
Scary, and the seed is the coffee bean. It has to be dried before you can make the coffee. You have to press it about thirty hours. She just did that. She's going to put it on the quarter cup, and she's going to brew the coffee.
Hey, my mom likes coffee too.
Yeah. You need ice. Can you help me about the shot?
This is the coffee shop at TNT Express.
The twenty-four. And since it's a moka, you get to decorate the cup with chocolate. Pour it like that, and then we're going to go like this so we can stir it evenly.
Oh, that's good.
This is so good. It's keeping me awake.
Thank you. So, Jordan, are there some things that you could tell me that you all, the students, are learning through this process?
So not only are the kids working on several different learning standards, but they are also learning some real-world experiences. They...these two started it with us last year as sixth graders, and they could probably go out without any adult present and do it completely on their own. I know they could. But they not only are learning how to talk to people and work on their social skills, they're also learning how to make coffee and count change. And they're also getting to know the other teachers and students in the building that they wouldn't get a chance to interact with on any other daily basis. And they know their names, what they like to put in their coffee. Sometimes they don't even have to get their order. They just make it for them. But they also...I forgot what else I was going to say.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. So Kel, what are some things that you've learned?
I...I help coffee, take orders, money, give change, love, to make money. I, I help coffee, take orders, money, give change, love, to make, move, ice coffee.
We hope you stay tuned for more from the Doug Ray.
Thank you for coming. Kira, is there something that you would like to say about your experience? What are some things that you learned?
Okay. Well. I learned about making an iced coffee. Yeah.
Was that your favorite thing tonight?
Yes, it is. Like old people, definitely cold people. Aren't you getting tired of them?
Thank you so much.
I came to the clinic during school and when I got here, they were very thoughtful and friendly to me and they took very good care of me.
We provide a full variety of primary care services, preventative, acute care, chronic care for adults and children.
It's been very convenient for me because I haven't had to.
If your student gets sick, you could send them over to one of the wellness centers rather than having to take off of work.
It's kind of hard sometimes to get out of the work. It's just good that they have like a school-based clinic because like that, if a child is sick, they could just come over here without the parent coming in.
I knew that I wanted to highlight the Law Academy at Springdale High School and specifically the relationship that we have with Springdale Police Department. Very unique, something I'm very proud of. We have a great asset, Corporal Scott. I want to introduce Melanie Crusher, she is a Law Academy teacher and I'll let her be looking.
Good evening. I am Melanie Crusher and I am a Law and Public Safety Academy instructor. I don't think that in my, but, and I teach English and debate. And we're going to try.
In the Law Academy. All right. So myself along with Corporal Scott, who is the Springdale High School Resource Officer and as well as Springdale Police Department Corporal and Criminal Justice Law Instructor for us, will, along with Jasmine Gonzalez and Margarita Gonzalez, those are senior Law Academy students, no relation, will be speaking to you tonight. So for seventeen years, the Springdale High School Law Academy program has been forging partnerships with our community and has served as an example for similar programs of study nationwide. Our partnership with the Springdale Police Department has been recognized with awards from local organizations such as the Springdale Public Schools Education Foundation and on the national level from the National Career Academy Coalition. Additionally, our partnership with Walmart has allowed Walmart corporate attorneys into our classrooms to instruct our students in matters involving civil laws which are relevant to them and to their lives. These examples of our partnerships and collaborations with those outside our school walls have allowed us as classroom teachers to not be the only voice students hear in the classroom. Students are allowed to hear from experts with life experience. We are blessed to call organizations such as the Springdale Police Department our partners and have instructors such as Corporal Scott in our classrooms.
Thank you. Thanks for letting us come out and talk to you guys this evening. Again, my name is Corporal John Scott. I just want you to know that students who are in the public law and, or the Law and Public Safety Academy, they're taught by the standards set by the state of Arkansas. The benefit that SHS has with the Law and Public Safety is that they're taught by a current active-duty police officer with over twenty-four years of experience, over twenty-three hundred training hours, a bachelor's degree from John Brown University, and a teaching license from the Arkansas Department of Education. Thank you. So it's not a rookie up here teaching your kids. So what we do within the, the Springdale Police Department allows me to come over and teach, teach with the Law Academy. We work hand-in-hand with the Springdale School District teacher who does the grades and evaluates the progress of the students, tracks their attendance, they do all that stuff. I have the easy part. I serve on an advisory board with the Law and Public Safety Academy and I offer and give the opportunities for our kids to earn federal certifications such as Stop the Bleed, Active Shooter Training, CPR Training, Dispatch Certifications, FEMA Certifications, NIMS one hundred, two hundred, seven hundred, and eight hundred, which are all required to work at any law enforcement agency in the United States. They have to have those classes and I'm offering them to our students. Additionally, our students, I'm teaching our students various training, they get certificates. I'm a big certificate guy, I like to give these kids certificates. They get certificates in handcuffing techniques, accident investigation, defensive tactics, felony traffic stops, crime scene investigation, and so much, much more. Everything students are taught by, by myself, that's used in real-life police work. What they're being taught is what I used to teach the cadets at the actual Arkansas State Police Academy here in, in Springdale. They also get the experience because I know other law enforcement agencies and other officers who are more experts in their field than what I am. So I can bring them in such as K-9 officers, SWAT officers, people from the state, from alcohol beverage control. Not only do these students get to hear, hear how their agencies operate and hear, and hear how to work a K-9 or running a SWAT team, they also get to use those people as contacts, as references for further down the road. Through activities and exercise, I allow our students to take ownership in their learning. They do take that ownership and they learn it's okay to fail. It's okay to fail as long as you're learning from your mistakes. Students also become intrinsically motivated because they're a non-traditional classroom. That's what we have. Non-traditional classroom environment. We're taught, they're taught to be leaders and motivators within their own academy, within the school and their own, and their own community. Learning goes beyond the four walls of the regular classroom. We're, we're always moving, we're always going outside, we're doing a lot of the work under a safe and controlled environment. We're going outside and into the elements just like a regular or a certified police officer would do. And with that, here's a couple of our Law Academy students to tell you about their experiences in my class.
Hi, my name is Jasmine Gonzalez. I'm a senior at Springdale High School and I competed in Skills USA and became state gold medalist for criminal justice. Mm-hmm. Yes, I beat two colleges, yeah, second, third place, yeah. And got a scholarship for Community College of Morelton. I had the best amazing two years being in the Law Academy with wonderful teachers, Ms. Hainight saying, "Welcome, beautiful kids," "Bye, be my beautiful kids," and Ms. Lockhart, Ms. Caro, and then meeting Officer Scott, he was new and we were like, oh, okay. And then he would make some jokes and we were like, mm, no. And then we got used to him and we love him and we cherish him, just like how we love Officer Cardenas, which we call him Carditas. Yeah. As a student, it has benefited, benefited me having an actual law enforcement officer as an instructor because he has twenty-four years of experience out in the streets of what he knows, knowledge and the law and everything. And he, he gives us all of that to us and we tell our friends, hey, don't do this because we know, we know what's right and what's wrong. And we let our family, our friends, our community know, please don't do this, this is the law. And it gives, it makes us leaders, telling, you know, our fellow peers what's happening. And I would like to thank the Springdale Police Department for giving us a special, special person to help us guide for our LPSA, Law Public Academy, which is Officer Scott because he's been my motivation for the career I want to be in. And having Corporal Scott as well as other members of the Springdale Police Department available and teaching in the classroom has brought meaning to the law elements, connections with the real world. The hands-on lessons include criminal traffic stop, handcuffing, handcuffing skills, which I'm one of the fastest to handcuff, so, from the best. Crime scene investigation, I would like to recognize one of our stu, three of our students, Melissa Hernandez, Maya Lee Gillen, Gillenright, and Liliana DeGallo for placing third place in state for CSI. They did amazing. We also learned use of force and defensive tactics from Officer Hessler, was it? He did good. Dispatch training, police report, and legal writing, job interview skills, and job shadows. We've been to the police department. I mean, what they taught us, I've seen it at the police department, what dispatch does and at the Washington County Jail. And just looking at that, that motivates me that I want to become a better person. And PSA has gave me the opportunity to work with Springdale Police Officers who make me excited to come to class every single day. That's what I call school.
Thank you.
My name is Margarita Gonzalez and like Jasmine, I am a senior in the Law and Public Safety Academy at Springdale High School. I also competed in Skills last April and I placed gold in Exemporaneous Speaking and I was ranked ninth in the nation at Nationals in June. So I agree with her, having Corporal Scott in class really shows us that the work we're learning is not just some random stuff out of a textbook, it's stuff that's actually applied in jobs and things that knowing is important because no matter what, the law is relevant to every single aspect of your life. One of the other partnerships that has been extremely beneficial to us in the Law and Public Safety Academy is our partnership with Walmart. Their corporate attorneys come and they teach us civil law through workshops and they've taught us workshops in immigration towards employee, employment discrimination, cyberbullying, and social host laws. At these workshops, they provide us real-life scenarios and they give us a cho, a chance to advocate for ourselves and have a say in what we're learning and have a say in the things that we research. And every issue that we touch on is timely and relevant to us as students. With our community and corporate collaborations, we have an opportunity to take risks and correct our mistakes along the way. We have a voice in what we learn and we wouldn't get to do this in just any other kind of setting. Our partnerships with Springdale Police Department and Walmart allow us to see opportunities for careers and network and have an important role in our community again in a way that a traditional classroom would never let us. On behalf of the Law and Public Safety Academy, I would like to thank the Springdale Police Department and our other partners as well as the Springdale School District for giving us these opportunities.
Got some great kids, right? Now I think it's evident that we've seen today that we have some great partnerships going on. We're very fortunate to serve in a district that values community, values community partnerships, and that promotes out-of-the-box thinking. So I really appreciate these kids, appreciate these other leaders that have joined me up here today to showcase our school. We're looking forward to the hearing and seeing how the other schools build on the blocks that we've learned this school year. So thank you.
Did you hear application of learning? I know every event that we go to together, whether it be school board lunches or school board meetings or just being with kids in the schools, et cetera. You're beginning to see the pendulum shift further and further where kids have confidence to apply their learning. I had an opportunity today to speak to the State East Board educators from around the state. And I talked to them about efforts that we're making to engage the business community in our schools as partners. And I, I think we're going to see more and more and more of that sort of thing over time. In our work session, we focused on really our instructional management plan and the school facilities plan of the district. Since that time, we've had a follow-up meetings with the board regarding the school facilities plan. Later in the meeting tonight, Dr. Cleveland will again review some of the highlights of that program. Kevin, if I could, I'd like to kind of look at F and G and just make the board aware. We have interviewed architects who will help us with the design features of the, of the school facility plan for the next ten years, et cetera. Great partnership efforts over time. The Wittenberg, Deloney, and Davidson Firm will continue to work for us in that architectural role. From the standpoint of our construction manager, over time, we've worked to build relationships with multiple providers in the community. The Flint Co. Company, the Baldwin and Shell Construction Management Companies do great work for us. They've demonstrated their interest, their partnership in continuing to work for us. And I would tell you, as we look over the facilities plan, the master plan, which will guide our building program for the next ten years, these two construction management firms will help us. Will continue, I'll do my very best and have talked with their leadership already about how to divide the work so that both of those great companies can continue to be partners with us. And the way I look at it, Kevin, from the standpoint, we're very interested in staff and expertise and so forth, but you have to even look beyond that, that level and think of the workmanship that is in place by each of those companies that make up the very fabric, if you will, of our community. So again, we'll stay with WD&amp;D as our architect on our facilities plan and we will work closely with both Flint Co. and Baldwin and Shell in a construction management role. Mr. President, any further questions about those decisions? I'll, I'll come back to that, I'll come back to the foundation work.
No, I think that's kind of a repeat of our discussion at the work session on how we can handle construction management and the architect.
Yes. Yes, and I'm just trying to explain to you now those decisions have been made.
You bet.
Okay. Ms. Ferguson, you want to come up and join me for just a moment? A very special event that's coming up. If you look at item F on the agenda, the Springdale Education Foundation, their cornerstone event is scheduled for October seventeenth. And some very special people will be honored that evening and really brought in as cornerstone recipients. Joe Donaldson, who's an enormous partner and friend of the Springdale School System will be a recipient, as is, as will Rick and Julie Roble. will be a recipient, as will Rick and Julie Roble. And then Linda Childress Knapp will be an honorary as well. So, that'll be a special evening event. It's scheduled, as I said, on the 17th of October. The timeline is from 5:30 in the evening, probably until about 8:00 or a little after in the evening. And I think we've got a very special designee in our midst this evening. Mike, are you emceeing that event?
Yes. Don't discourage people from coming in the evening.
Isn't that a beautiful event, though, and it has been over the years? It really captures the spirit of this community like really few others. I just think it's a beautiful event. So, that announcement. And then there's another Springdale Education Foundation event that preceded our board meeting tonight. You want to tell the board about that statement?
You bet. I'm happy to. So, tonight, right now, in here in about five minutes, Spring Creek Park is going to have a lot of little, small rubber ducks floating down it. Hopefully, there's water. I didn't even check the water level when I came through, but-
Fire department, Kansas City.
Hopefully, yes. I do want to recognize Kelly Borch. She also served on this committee with me, along with Chris Steckline and other members of the foundation. And it was our goal, Kelly and I were brought in, just to bring all schools to participate in this big fundraising event for the foundation. So, last year, they raised a little over $1,000. And so far, with all of our colleagues participating and getting quacked, we had this ginormous duck that traveled around the city of Springdale, one at the elementary level, one at the secondary level. And I'm sure my elementary principals weren't as excited as I was about the idea, but it turned out to be a lot of fun. And we raised a little over $10,000 for the foundation this year. So, thank you to everybody that participated. So, the money goes directly back to the schools. Teachers can apply for grants for their classrooms, or students actually get scholarships as well. High school students can apply for scholarships through the foundation. So, it goes right back to our kids, our classrooms, our teachers. So, it was great.
Well, thanks to you and all our principals who helped with that, that's for sure.
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. President?
No, that's great.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Rollins, board. Just a quick little, we were trying to get set up for the duck race live, which was why we had that little malfunction, so I wanted to start by apologizing for that. And the second thing is, I want to say that I think I have the best job in the district, along with Ms. Tisher and Ms. Childress. Dr. Rollins might say he has the best job, but the one thing that might make it a little bit better if Sonora Middle School were to come and, you know, deliver us coffee, that would be a little mocha now and then would be perfect. But today, we have seven items on the curriculum instruction. Ms. Tisher, if she will please come forward. She has the first items, and then following that will be Ms. Childress. She has three items.
Okay. Good evening. First up, we would like to talk about our National History Day results. The National History Day competition was held at the University of Maryland in College Park, June 9th through the 13th, just this past summer. And it will come as no surprise that we had some national winners. And so, I'd like to invite Mr. Ben Legrone, instructional specialist, to the podium to recognize our special award winners.
Good evening. Let's go ahead and have Nolan and Macy and Brady come on up, or I think Brady couldn't make it tonight. Don't come up here and stand at my left right here. So, last May, we recognized the students that went to state, that placed at state, and some of those qualified to go to Nationals. And these were our national winners, which is a big deal. Only four districts in the entire state had projects that placed at Nationals, and Springdale and Conway were the only districts that had more than one project that placed. This is pretty, pretty elite-level work. I would say it's like, to place is the All-America of high school historical researchers. I mean, it's really tough. I would kind of put it on par with master's degree-level historical research. And I've just been very impressed looking at their work, not just because they're brilliant, but it takes, it takes a lot of grit, it takes a lot of hard work to research, write, revise, research, write, revise, and do that for about six to 10 months is probably how long they've been working on it. So, it's not just loving history, it's the commitment. It's extremely impressive. So, first, I want to recognize our national, so, a national winner is somebody that places in the top three of their category. A national finalist is somebody that places in the top 10 of their category. So, first, I want to recognize our national winner, which is Nolan Von Drawn, Harbor High School. Can you see that next slide? Oh, clicker. There we go. Okay. He had an exhibit on Helen Keller. So, he was in the senior division. He competed against 9th through 12th graders. His teacher was Amanda Tev. Ms. Tev, are you here? Let's recognize Nolan. And if you are a parent, if you are a parent, could you please stand for us? We recognize you. So, his mom shared some pictures with me. So, this is his exhibit there on the left, and down there at the bottom is his bibliography, that binder, and just hundreds of sources. So, it's pretty exciting. He got some cold, hard cash, too, with that award, so, yeah.
What was your fascination with Helen Keller? What made you decide to do your project on her?
Well, with the theme of triumph and tragedy, I wanted to focus on, like, take something that everyone knew, but turn it into a different aspect. So, with Helen Keller, everyone knew the story of her growing up and going blind and deaf, which was a big tragedy. But they didn't know what she did in our world as, like, an advocate for African-Americans, women's rights, and educational rights as well. So, I wanted to focus more on the differences that she made that people wouldn't know of.
All right. Next, we're going to reckon-
How much cold, hard cash?
$250 bucks. Next, we're going to recognize our national finalist team from Central Junior High, which is Macy Wyler and Brady Billingsley. Brady couldn't be here tonight. They did a group website, and what was really cool is, they were 9th graders competing against 12th graders and placed fifth. And they did a project on Emmett Till. You want to share with us why you chose Emmett Till?
Sure. So, starting last July, we were actually searching through different topics, and we both were super fascinated with civil rights. So, we wanted to take civil rights and kind of find a project and a topic within that that we would both really enjoy, that we didn't know much about, but we had heard about just a little bit. So, we chose Emmett Till because of his story and the ways that we could relate to him. At the time, we were both 14 years old when picking this topic, and he was 14 years old when he was brutally murdered. And throughout his trial, he would have been 14 years old. So, that really made an impact on us, that he was our same age. And, yeah, that's kind of why we chose Emmett Till.
Let's recognize Macy and Brady. And Macy, your parents here? Let's recognize his parents. And she has some pictures for me, too. There's them getting their medal. There's a little, I took a couple screenshots of their website. It's a beautiful website. And there's our congressional delegation. Did y'all just meet up in the subway?
Yeah, at the airport.
Airport. That's neat. Any other questions from the board? Y'all want to share any?
I was just going to say, I was honored that I got to see, like, one of the very first versions of this website a year ago. I'd love to get a link to see it now. Because, like, at the time, you told me that you would have to keep redoing, redoing, and I guess that's been almost a year ago. Congratulations, that's awesome.
I think my question is, are you going to do a project this year? You going to take a break?
I know, I've taken a year off. Hopefully, I'm going to come back next year. I know I will. I miss it already, so. I'm going to help out the little sister who's doing it this year, so.
I won't be competing this year because my goal was to actually make it to Nationals and hopefully place, because I've been doing it since 8th grade. And so, this year, I'm actually going to compete in HOSA. And with all the other classes that have been going on, I just thought that that'd be a good idea with my career goal in medical and things like that.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I would like to welcome Mr. Chad Burkett and Ms. Patty Priest to give us an update on our recent FFA award winners. The Washington County Fair was just held, and I think they have some updates and recognitions.
Absolutely. Let's bring everybody down, both schools. We had a huge presence at the fair this year, as you can see. Board, we're extremely pleased with both these kids, both these groups of kids. Something interesting that we did this year as a group is, we worked very closely together. You know, Ms. Priest and I, along with Mr. Jones, both of our teams, both sides of town, we actually put together strategy, both on, you know, written applications, proficiencies, animal projects. And we tried to posture and position our students so we could try to sweep all the events that we compete in. And so, you know, without all the instructors in our district, you know, we have numerous ag instructors. We all work together. We talk regularly. I just want to, you know, thank all of them for all the help they've provided me and students at Springville High School. We had a lot of kids compete. Some of the fair projects here, back it up a little bit. We brought several kids here. We had a lot of pig projects this year. These kids, you know, worked diligently throughout the summer. We also had a lot of poultry projects, a variety of different pigs you see here. We have a hamp cross, a Berkshire up there, black pigs commercial cross. And then, we also have kids that don't have the opportunity yet, or maybe, you know, facility-wise, or maybe they just choose they don't want to compete in animal-related activities. They can still participate in, you know, arts, communications, you know, various crafts. We did really well. I don't want to take up a lot of time talking. I want the kids to share just a little bit. Some others, we did very well in rabbits. The swine series this summer, the kids competed there. I want them to share a little bit. They presented the flags, colored guards, so they led the swine series. There was, on average, 500-plus pigs there from all over the country. Really an elite event. We have some young ladies there that made and entered some reefs, Mr. Wright's agriculture class. And we did a lot of community service. So, prior to the fair, our students show up there, and they actually work. So, we pick up all the trash, clean all the barns, paint, do all that work. Really proud of those kids. A few more, just variety of projects. Cattle, Ms. Webb, you know, did really well in cattle this year, got her feet wet. Additionally, one thing I want to really brag on is, there's no one in Washington County that can compete with Springville High School Ag Mechanics. We dominated that event. We had more entries than any other school, and we won every entry category. You can see some of the fabrication skills these students have achieved. Really proud of these kids. I want a couple of them want to share a few things. I know Mr. Thomas does. But I have Kaylee here, Clay, Matthew Thomas, Ramon, Matthew Tatum, Angel, Kylie Miller back there, Sid, and then Channing Thomas. One of the things I also want to recognize real quick is our parents, but all the parents here today. Would you stand up, and let's give you a round of applause? Put in perspective, so, like, the cheapest project is going to be a couple hundred bucks. And some of these families have spent tens of thousands of dollars. Cattle projects, pig projects, sleepless nights. I know there's a lot of nights, Mr. Jones and I, along with these kids on both sides, loading pigs at 3:00 in the morning on Sunday morning, go home, take a shower. The work they put in and their parents, you know, it takes a lot of dedication. Share the mic with Ms. Priest, but a couple of kids want to comment.
Yeah, they seem really eager.
Hi, my name's Clay Turner. I showed a dark cross Hampshire, and his name was Crispy Bacon. No, not yet. Here in about a month or so. Here in about a month or so, yeah. I, he said, showing colors. I carried the American flag and showing colors. And I've been in FFA for a while now. I really like to be involved. It's really fun. So, that's about it.
Hello, my name is Matthew Thomas. That's my mom up there. And I showed some chickens, and I, I just kind of wanted to talk about how the program at Springdale has helped me out. I came into Springdale as a student and nothing more. I really had no idea what I wanted to do with my life and after high school. So, you know, I decided I was going to try to figure out at least a little bit, and I signed up for a primetime that had FFA on it. And that was probably the smartest thing I've done since. Burkett talked me into joining FFA and then joining the Agriculture Academy, and I've never looked back since. It's been the best year and a half of my life.
I want to make a quick comment. When you tell Mr. Thomas here, call me anytime, he takes a very little- Midnight, you know, right in the little glass. If he has a question, he's going to ask.
Hi, my name's Matthew Tatum. I showed broilers and turkeys in the fair, along with my ag mechanics projects like the metal chicken, the pig hauler, and our mobile blind. And that's about it.
You saw that blind that came, right?
Yes. It was pre-purchased. It was pre-purchased, that's a $7,500 project, most expensive, expensive project in the local district. And we built it right out of our shop in, at Springville High School. And our, the metal chicken I produced, I made it out of, it cost me $0.00 coming out of my grandpa's shop, and it won first place. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kylie Webb. This year, I showed a bottle calf heifer, and just here's a little bit about her. This is her mom. She got very, very sick, and we tried our hardest to keep her alive, but we just had to put her down. And then, here's Lucy, my bottle calf. She's this picture, she's riding home in the front seat of the truck. And this picture is her very first time drinking from a bottle, which doesn't seem like a very big deal, but is a really big deal. So, then, a few months later, in April, this, we found another bottle calf. Her name is Spunk. Her mom just was a first-time heifer, and she didn't know what to do with her baby and abandoned her. So, now, there's two. And they became inseparable, so we had to take both of them to the fair. I only showed Lucy, the black one. And we got second place. Here's us in the ring. And they're both still pretty small, but they'll get bigger, and as they grow, I'll continue to show them and breed them as they get bigger.
Hi, I'm Kylie Miller. I'm a sophomore. I showed a Berkshire pig, and I got third place. And, yeah.
Anybody else want to visit?
Shannon had broilers, Sid did the pig Otis, Angel, Ramon both did ag mechanics. Ramon also had some chickens. One other quick comment, we have Arkansas Oklahoma State Fair coming up in a few weeks. Then we have Arkansas State Fair, and then we automatically start planning for next year. Additionally, I want to thank Ms. Priest. She helped us with our proficiencies. We had a star over Arkansas last year. It's inside the book there. Colton Miller competed there for his proficiency. He actually worked on a ranch through the summer, and that's Kylie's older brother. Additionally, there were only a few models of excellence, FFA chapters. Both Springdale and Harbor received National Superior Chapter Award and were two-star models of excellence, and will receive awards at the National FFA Convention, both schools in October. So, really proud of both schools. Ms. Priest?
Okay. We, let's start here, this, where Braden and, I don't know where my slide went. Okay, we, start here, this, word Braden in, I don't know where my slide went. Anyway, word Braden in. Next one, okay. I wanted to start with our recognition for national proficiency finalists. These, we had, so all of these students in both programs have what's called an SAE, it's their project outside of class, where they take what they've learned in class and apply it to their work. Then they can apply for the proficiency award, and all schools had several proficiency applications turned in. Harbor had 11 state winners, and then the state winners go on to the national competition in the summer, and a group of people get together and just sit and read applications all week. There are 52 different categories, and within each category, there are potentially 50 applications, and they're, what they're doing is sorting through, trying to find the top four in each category, and invite those four students to come to national competition and be interviewed and decide who the national winner is in October. So it's kind of an exciting thing to even make it through, to get one student be recognized for that from your school, after going through, there's lots of levels to get to that point to be considered a national finalist, and we're very blessed this year to have two students from Harbor, and there's only four in the state of Arkansas that were, have reached the status, and we have two of those four. And that's Braden Ingram, for his work, he works for War Eagle Processing, so his category is in ag processing, and then Amanda Anthony, she's in outdoor recreation, she works for Farmyard Buddies, a pony ride petting zoo thing, so, and we've had some neat experiences so far with these two young people. They will be interviewed in October, and they have to have a two-minute introduction, and then talk to a room of judges, just like a panel here, for 15 minutes. And last week, Dr. Smith and Dr. Greep sat down and visited with them, and it just reminded me of why I love this school district so much, because they spent over an hour with these young people, critiquing them, helping them, help, just spent so much time with them, helping them, and so we've got other teachers coming in over the next few weeks to help them and prepare them for their interview at national competition. Now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Jones for the county fair.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Rollins. This year at the Washington County Fair, we had 63 entries with 21 different exhibitors. This is a small portion of the kids that exhibited at the Washington County Fair, other ones have other school activities going on tonight, or jobs, or something like that. But we're going to recognize a few of them, Mr. Cooper Horn exhibited, he was first in class with two heifers, he was the champion aged steer, or aged cow, and champion cowcalf pair. He was also third in class with a steer, and second in class with his yearling bull. Something very interesting about Cooper is that Cooper does all of his, all his cattle that he showed this year, he breeds, and he takes care of them, and he has his own small herd at his house, that we go out and visit and look at, and he, him and his parents and his grandfather, and they all work with that herd, and they build it, and they pull show animals out of that. There's a lot of different ways to exhibit animals, sometimes you can purchase them, sometimes you can grow them yourself, and it's just neat for the different opportunities that come with the different avenues that kids go to do that. We also had Ms. Abby Kelly, Abby, you want to raise your hand? Your hands are full. Abby had a wonderful Washington County Fair, she was the champion senior, champion junior market lamb showman, she was the reserve champion goat showman, she was the grand champion overall commercial ewe, she was a grand champion yearly, yearling commercial ewe, she had two class winners in the commercial ewe division, she had, in the breeding ewe, she had fifth overall, she had a class winner in the market lambs, she was third overall, she had two class winners with her market goats, she was fifth overall with her market goats, and also had two class winners with her, with her market goats. She has a, she won a belt buckle, banners, multiple ribbons, which she brought, if you'd like to see them. Would you all like her to pass the buckle down, or?
How many animals, that's where I'm trying to keep up, how many animals would she show
So on our summer visits, we go to, we show up, and I would always meet her and her dad around four or five o'clock in the afternoon, when ready to get off work, and I'd show up there, and she would just be covered head to toe from working with them animals for hours on end. And that's what it takes to be competitive like that with these kids, is a lot of hard work and discipline, I wish that she, that she exhibits each and every day, that she goes out there and works with them animals. We also, in the swine division, we had Talia Harrelson, Keela Harrelson, neither one of them are here, we had champion Hampshire in the breeding guilts, reserve champion Poland in breeding guilts, and we also had the reserve champion market Chester. Brittany Kissinger is also not here, she's at another school function, she was a class winner of class five and fifth overall dark cross this year. Anai Phipps was fifth overall with her Hampshire, market hog, and second in her class. In the horticulture building, Mr. Roberts, who is homesick tonight, handles that area of Harbor High School, and we had 15 different entries there, and with those entries, Jamie Reed had won the tallest sunflower. Gavin Carney was second with his vegetable basket, Gavin's down there, and then William Patterson was second with his biggest zucchini. We had three rabbit exhibitors and 10 poultry entries. We also have multiple students showing at the District and State Fair, they'll be exhibiting swine, sheep, goats, and poultry at both of these fairs coming up. Oh, and we also had five students in the dog show, and we won purebred, correct? Mr. Jack Coates won the purebred with his bulldog, and the dog show on Saturday, and that's something Ms. Priest does with the kids on Saturday morning.
Thank you so much to students and all of your families, and for all of the teachers, we appreciate so much everything that you do. Is Mr. Schaefer still here? Mr. Schaefer, would you like to take a picture of the combined ag students out front? Okay, all right, we already got the pictures, thank you.
I want to make one quick comment, we have Ms. Horn, Cooper's mother here, Ms. Horn, would you stand up? She actually leads a Washington County 4-H group, a lot of smaller siblings, including my son, Ms. Pinkton's son, Mr. Jones' son, a lot of these other, you know, student siblings, she leads that 4-H group on her own time, and she helps our little kids transition to FFA. I want to give her a round of applause.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, I would like to recognize Afton Schlief. While the room is kind of clearing, I want to tell you a little about, a little bit about Ms. Schlief. Ms. Schlief has been an English teacher at Southwest Junior High until this year, she has changed over now to instructional facilitator, and she, this summer, was a featured guest on Dr. Becky Bailey's podcast, Real Talk for Real Teachers. And Ms. Schlief was invited as a special guest to discuss the topic, why conscious discipline belongs in secondary schools. Conscious discipline is a trauma-informed, a trauma-informed program, instructional program, that is nationally and internationally acclaimed. Dr. Becky Bailey is an award-winning author, renowned educator, and she's internationally recognized for this program, and for being an expert in childhood education and developmental psychology. She's a really big deal, a really big deal. And she did an entire podcast just with Afton as her guest, and so I just quickly want to recognize Afton for her achievement in conscious discipline, and for being a guest on that podcast. And in your artifact on page 43, I included the link, if you would like to listen to the podcast at some point in time, you have the link there, and here's Ms. Schlief.
I don't want to speak, okay, there we go. First of all, I just want to thank each and every single one of you for your vision and support of not only the staff, but all students here at Springdale Schools, and you have helped make a dream come true for me, with being able to sit down with the creator of conscious discipline this summer, and record a podcast with her. And so, Ms. Tishard, okay, thank you. So Ms. Tishard introduced a little bit about what conscious discipline is. One thing I do want to add, it's the only social-emotional learning practice that is adult-first, so all the other ones out there really focus on the students, this one focuses on the adults changing themselves and learning the skills first, because we typically can't teach what we don't know. It's sort of like when you get on the airplane, and they tell you to put your own oxygen mask on first, and then help assist with the children, it's that same thought process. Out in the community, when I talk with parents, I usually refer to Mr. Rogers of Mr. Rogers' neighborhood, he's very much of the same philosophy of conscious discipline, and I'm a huge fan of Mr. Rogers, too. And conscious discipline has helped me change my life, and literally rewire my brain, to help me become the best Afton that I can possibly be, and that would not have happened if Springdale Public Schools did not bring in a master instructor from conscious discipline, there's only nine of them, and we got one of them to come here and speak with teachers. I went to that training, just kind of as a joke, because I thought, oh, well, what's conscious discipline, that's conscious, I'll go to that, and it literally changed my life. I sent Shannon a text message, Ms. Tishard a text message, probably 10 minutes into that training, and said, "This is the most amazing thing I have ever been to, the best workshop I've ever attended, how can I get this book, I'm willing to lead a book study, I'm willing to lead this in Springdale." Something else that's going to be innovative with conscious discipline with our Springdale students, is there is sort of one video of the use of conscious discipline with secondary students on the website right now. Last year, we spent the year in my classroom filming, and at some point this year, they're going to be putting those videos of our Springdale students practicing conscious discipline on their website, and so that's pretty amazing. And in this new role, that I'm so thankful in having the best time of my life as an instructional facilitator at Southwest, we, one of the things that we are doing is revamping how we look at in-school suspension, and so we are, I want to get the name right, we are changing it to a behavior intervention room, where we're modeling those executive skills for students, we're working with the students on those, developing those executive skills, and then we're empowering teachers to help them teach those executive skills behaviorally to our students. And just to close, my future, I'm on track to becoming a conscious discipline certified instructor, and I plan on attending the Advanced Institute this February, and so I can't thank you enough from the bottom of my heart, just thank you for the opportunities that you've provided for me and our students, it's literally changing my life, so thank you.
Good evening, I read a quote in a book just yesterday, oops, this isn't it, Missy, sorry. No, you're fine. That said that the performance of teachers and the performance of students is directly related to the school's culture. We talk a lot about school culture, we talked about the difference between climate and culture this summer, and our professional development with our principals and with our teachers. Dr. Rollins has school culture on the agenda for us to discuss every Monday morning during our meetings, because it really does play a huge role in the performance of our teachers and our students. Many of you may remember Lola Malone, and Lola actually shared this quote with me this week, she loves to send me things to reflect upon, and I love it, it says, "Don't make, don't mistake culture as only being about doughnuts and jeans day, that may help climate in the short term, but culture is about long-term, it's about relationships, the way we treat one another, taking risks without repercussions, loving kids, and so much more." Tonight, Cynthia Voss and Shelley Beulie are going to visit with you about some of the things that they're doing to create a positive school culture at Shaw Elementary.
All right, thank you so much, we're going to be fast tonight, but we are so excited to share with you some of our newest, latest, and newest ideas. First of all, relationships, of course, we all know, it starts with relationships, and we are constantly working on our culture, our climate, we feel like if you were to ask us one thing about Shaw Elementary that we are most proud of, we would say it's our culture, but it's the hardest work that we do, and we never can just say, "Check, we're finished," because we're always working hard on it. Teachers work so very hard, and we all know that, and so part of our job as administrators is truly just helping them with their balance, because if they have their balance in check, their lives in check, they are going to be able to perform to their maximum ability. And so we are constantly kind of helping our teachers, just as we would, teachers would in their classrooms, so we, Shelley and I feel like we have, all of our teachers are, in a way, we see them as our students, we want to support them and give them what they need, just so our teachers can go into the classrooms and do the same for their kids. Relationships, Shelley's going to talk to you a little bit about what we're doing and what we've learned, but I do want to share with you that we are going on our 20th year together, and this is our anniversary year, our 20th year. Shelley was my intern whenever I was at Smith Elementary as a teacher, then she went on to teach at Smith, and then basically went on to be an ESL teacher, and then helped me open Shaw. So, we have been at this a long time, and we feel like that we've learned, every year we learn something different, but we never do it the same, never do it the same every year, and we really were excited about some things that we learned at our conference this year, so I'm going to let Ms. Beulie tell you about that.
Thank you. We were really inspired by our back-to-school administrator trainings, we talked a lot about school culture and climate, and the difference in those two, and then when we were able to attend AAEA, I was able to attend a session on school culture, and one of the ideas we got from there was yard signs, so I don't know if you've seen these, but we put these yard signs, we spent about seven hours on the Sunday before school started, putting these in all of our teachers' yards, we put them in certified staff, IAs, office staff, everybody got one, and there was a little, there's a little story on the back about what it means to be a star polisher, something we talk about, how it's just like culture, we're never there, we can't just leave it, we have to constantly work on it and polish it. So the teachers were, they took those, you can see some examples there, and then each week, we use those pictures to spotlight something great that's happening in our building, of how someone's being a polisher. And the neat thing is, the first two weeks we did it, I found somebody doing something great, I made a video, we linked it in, and now I'm starting to get videos from our staff of great things they're seeing other teachers doing. So, we were really proud of this, it just exploded on Facebook, our teachers were so positive about the reaction they got, to having that sign in their yard just made them feel so special and appreciative for the hard work they've been doing, getting ready for the school year. This is another idea we got for our students, and, you know, we think that, we think that hard work pays off, and we want our kids to learn that. So, we've started hard hat awards, the kids, each week, one person from each classroom is given a hard hat, and they get to wear it for the week, and we kind of thought, the kindergartners might be really into it, the fifth graders, maybe not so much, but we kind of had to pry these away from a couple of kids today to take them, they, they take a lot of pride in this, and then each week, at our Rise and Shine Assembly, they're passing it on, so it's kind of like passing on that legacy of how important it is to work hard. So, we're really proud of the culture that we've worked on so hard, and the relationships we've built, and we're excited to be able to share with you today. Thank you very much.
Awesome, as you know, we had just had a professional development day, and all of the K-6 teachers and K-12 special ed teachers got Roots Training, which is our Springdale pathway for rise, and I'm going to have Cindy Covington, Principal of Childers Nap, and Allison Strange, Principal of HARP, talk to you about what we did on our professional development day.
First of all, thank you all for having us this evening, and then I want to start with just one word, which is wow, have you been wowed tonight by everything that you have seen? This district is incredible, sorry, I think I'm louder than I am, thank you. The, we're just doing awesome stuff in this district, you've seen that tonight, you've seen the passion of our children, everything that they're learning, and what's behind all of that, our teachers, administrators, everybody working as a team to push, push, that are teachers, administrators, everybody working as a team to push, 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 and support our kids. We can't do it without y'all's support, so thank you for that. And then, what else is happening when these kids, when we see all the great learning for the kids, this is a phrase I think everybody's familiar with, "All means all, all the time." We are learners all the time, and that includes the teachers. We have to have opportunities to learn as educators so that we can better support our children. And that's what Day One of Roots was about. And this is the Springdale version of the state initiative, which is RISE. And you may have heard of that, and it stands for Reading Initiative for Student Success. This is student excellence, I'm sorry. I was looking back going, that's not an S at the end. But Roots stands for Reading Opens Opportunities to Succeed. And again, that's the Springdale version of this pathway to proficiency and awareness of what it takes to help students learn to read. What we know as educators is that there is a gap, there's a gap. And what, there's science research out there that's been going on for decades, and that's where the gap is, from the methodologies and the strategies that we're using in the classrooms. So, what we're starting here, we've just completed Day One. This is a 36-hour training that will take place over six days, spread over two years. We just completed Day One, which is neuroscience of reading. That was the focus of it, giving the why, what is going on behind how our children are learning to read. Then, you can see right there that Day Two, coming up in October, will be focused on phonology, and then Day Three in January will focus on phonics. From there, we'll move into Days Four, Five, and Six in the coming school year 2021. We want to give you a little bit of a heads-up of what happened with our neuroscience reading day. That was a lot of research. It was a lot of learning. And one of the, and we're not going to do that tonight, so don't anybody worry about that. We're giving you the briefest overview that could still legitimately be called an overview. And so, what we did on that day, one of the big takeaways was the reading of science, Roots, is not a program. It is not a curriculum. We already have programs. We already have curriculum. Reading of science is information. It is information to add to our learning to help close that gap between what we're currently doing in the classroom with some awesome strategies and awesome curriculum and programs in place, but there's still a gap. The gap we're finding is coming from really understanding deeply how the brain works, how we learn. So, that's what this is about. And the learning that we, that just occurred on that first day, my goodness, it was lights-out. And one of the things we took away, again, you'll see this every time for all six days, a recurring theme, it is not a curriculum or a program. It is knowledge. It is information. Four things that we did on that day, or that we talked about, were four theoretical models. And remember, we're, you've got the Reader's Digest version right here. We spent six hours on these four theoretical models, the simple view of reading, Scarborough's rope, Aries' phases of word recognition, and the four-part processor model. We had visuals. We did hands-on tactile learning to deepen our own understanding of what these models meant and how we could apply this knowledge into the classroom to support what we're already doing for our children. So, we expect to see huge gains in what's happening with our children and growing our readers. And the why behind this is really simple. We know, we have struggling readers, and reading is a life skill. So, it has to remain a day-to-day focus with a constant emphasis on what can we do? How can we, as educators, learn more to help our children in the classroom? So, that's what this is, and this is just a little bit about Day One. Mrs. Covington is going to talk to you about a little bit of the logistics and some of the feedback that we got, which is incredible. Our teachers are as excited as any child ever was about coming into the classroom for their own opportunity to learn because they know how powerful this is for our kids.
Okay. How was Roots Training presented? First of all, all of the administrators and instructional facilitators, we received training about this last year. So, then, the elementary buildings were paired. So, we had the Fortunate Nap to work with HARP Elementary. So, we worked together in the planning, the preparation, getting everything together. And then, our staff members were seated in grade-alike groups. So, my kindergarten teachers don't ever get to talk to her kindergarten teachers, but for these six days of training, they will sit together and talk about what kindergarten looks like at their school and what it looks like at ours. So, that was a great part of the program. And then, who presented the training? The leaders in our buildings, the principals, assistant principals, and building instructional facilitators who had received the training then presented it to their staff. And I'm going to go back just really fast to show you the pictures. If you look at that picture right there, you see it's at HARP Elementary. The instructional facilitators from that building are presenting the training, and then you see how the tables are in tees right there. Half of those teachers at that table would be teachers from HARP, and half of those teachers at those tables would be from Nap. We also had quite a few members of pre-K join us, as well as special ed from the district. So, it was a great day of learning together. This picture right here, there were lots of hands-on things. She mentioned Scarborough's rope. We could talk about that for an hour. But that's just a theoretical model of what learning to read looks like. So, our teachers actually built that model and have a deep understanding of that. You can see lots of hands-on activities, looking at data together and really working together. And I know the same thing went on at the other elementaries as well. And then, one thing that was important to us, and we also shared that at the district level, was the feedback from our staff. And these are some of the things that our teacher said. "I was really interested in learning about the theoretical model, specifically hyperlexic readers." Well, that teacher is one of mine, and that was what our PLC meetings were about this week, trying to answer her questions about how to help specific learners. I would, the next one, "I was able to understand the struggles of my students more clearly." How many of you remember how you learn to read? We pretty much remember not being able to read and then being able to read, but the actual process is a mystery because it happens in our brain. So, understanding how that works helps our teachers understand how to help students through that process. The next one talks about phonological awareness. And then, the last one talks about different pathways. All of our students can learn, but it's so important that we provide different pathways and opportunities so that whatever works best for them will help them become proficient readers. We want to thank you. Like we said, we were so excited. We could have spent hours, but we did want to leave our contact information with you. We're also leaving you a little bookmark with some of that information. If you ever want more info or you want to know what in the world is phonological awareness, we'll be glad to help you with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'm so excited that it has already, it was just last week, and it's already carrying over into PLCs. Today, I was walking through Jones Elementary, and I saw that a third-grade teacher had taken Scarborough's rope back to her students, and every student in the classroom had one that they were using during their literacy time. So, it's great to see all of that research and knowledge in action. All right. Next, I'm going to invite Stacy Ferguson, principal of Turnbull Elementary, and Kimberly Crumbie, principal of Westwood Elementary, to come forward. Last month, you got to hear about how IB was going at Springdale High School, and so, we wanted to give you an opportunity tonight to hear about our primary year's IB programs at these two schools.
Well, I'll start out. Seeing her slide here, why is IB different? We had an IB training at Turnbull Elementary. Our teachers actually came back a day early in August and tagged on that Monday. They started on Tuesday, but they came back on Monday and did two and a half days of training. And then, Don Wetrick came to our building the next, or to our district the next week and talked all about innovative classrooms, and it was the same message. So, that was wonderful for our staff to hear that, to that reassurance, to know that really what you're doing is just best practices in giving student agency about their learning, letting them choose what topics they're learning about and what they're researching about. And we just know that when we give them those opportunities, then their level of engagement is going to go higher because it's something that they want to learn, and they are presenting in a, in a way that they want to present. And so, that's super exciting. The last few days of training, the team that came of trainers helped our teachers with our written curriculum and tying that in, and just, again, just emphasize the importance of bringing outside experts into our classrooms and letting our kids hear from them. So, it really supported the work of Don Wetrick as well.
And so, coming into Westwood, I had no previous IB experience, and so, it's pretty humbling to walk into a building as the principal and know the least about IB. And so, the district was kind enough to send me, as well as Martha Tompkins, the assistant principal, to San Francisco to an IB training this June. And so, I got to hit the ground running with that. And there were so many things I learned about IB. A lot of it was similar to the work we were doing at Tyson Elementary when I was there as the assistant principal. But one thing that stuck out to me is just having a primary focus that maybe was a little different was the international-mindedness piece. And we all know that we have lots of cultures represented and that we should acknowledge and foster that in our schools. But that is central to the IB mission, is the international-mindedness piece. And that was definitely one of my ahas from the training this summer. They talk about, we should reach out, which is how, to consider how we interact with others, and we should reach in to understand ourselves in relation to others. And I thought to myself, wow, this goes perfectly with our mission from Dr. Rollins, to teach them all, whether they come from across the street or from across the ocean. So, one of my goals as principal at Westwood this year is to bring back some of those traditions and start some new ones that really bring in all of the cultures from our school, and to help our students be prepared for a world where they will be working with all different types of people. So, I really appreciate the opportunity to go to that training, and I'm going to keep learning lots from my staff this year because they are a wealth of knowledge, and I'm about $10 worth so far. So, thank you, guys.
All right, excellent. I'd like to introduce Ms. Kathy Lander tonight. She's going to give you a brief introduction and maybe even go into the weeds a little bit on our comprehensive health plan.
Good evening. Thank you, school board, and Dr. Rollins for this opportunity to visit with you. I think in your packet, you should have the information of our mandated programs that went on this past school year and the results of how many students we screened, how many we saw, our BMI results, flu clinics that we also had, our partnerships, our social services funds that we spend on helping students with eye exam glasses, doctor appointments, medication, our giveaways that Beverly does at the very beginning of the school year when families come in to get school supplies, clothing, food supplies to start off their school year, and also our Heart Saver classes. We teach all our district employees. I had a class actually today. So, I have football coaches, cafeteria managers, the paraprofessionals that ride on the buses with students, the bus drivers, and selected teachers throughout the school year on CPR certification, how to use an AED. Also, my nurses have been trained in stop-the-bleed instructors, so they have now gone back to their schools to hold other classes if need be, also to train students if the occasion arises, which I know there's new law that has been passed on that. So, we're working towards that, too. We partnership with Medical Arts Pharmacy for adult immunizations, the Burlsworth Foundation, several Dr. Owens, Dr. Myers, Dr. Brandon, McKinney Drug, and several hospitals in the area to work with other trainings, too, for our school, for our schoolchildren. We also work with the ears program through Arkansas Children's Hospital Northwest. So, they send audiologists in to students that wear hearing aids, maybe use an FM system to hear in the classroom, and also children who fail the hearing test that we provide at school. And we get them seen, and then we determine what kind of help they need from there, which is a savings for the parents and not having them go to three or four doctors to determine if they, what needs to be done next. So, that is very helpful for us. Also, in your packet, you will see the school nurse survey, and this is information we collect that's mandated by law. And this is given to the state school nurse consultant, and she collects all the information across the state. And this information, she's able to turn into the state legislature. Maybe they're looking at possibly passing another law, maybe looking at what else funding needs to be done to assist with children at school for any type of medical issues. So, you may see on this list that during this past school year, my nurses sent 57,000 children back to class that came by the health room to visit, that maybe needed to have a Band-Aid, maybe to have their ears checked, maybe they didn't feel well, maybe they had a headache. At that point, we're able to spend time in the health room with the nurse, but then did not get sent home. We're able to keep these children in school and set them back. Do you have any questions at this point of the information that I gave to you? Okay. Yes?
It's just amazing at the scope of the work, and thank you for sharing the depth of it with us. It helped us all understand.
You're welcome. We like working side-by-side with the teachers, the staff, and the principals to help work with the kids, to find needs that they, find things that they may need. If they need assistance, we're there to help the families. I've had the privilege to work in a school here the last, this part of this semester. And last year, I had a nurse on maternity leave, so I spent a lot of time working with families and making sure we're getting things done correctly and helping families navigate the medical system and also getting dental health at the same time. You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Damon Donnell, our coordinator for student support. He's in a new role this year. We're going to introduce you to our social workers who have done some outstanding work. We have some new ones, and apparently, they dress alike. So, Mr. Donnell?
Oh, you did it. That's awesome.
Oh, thank you, dear.
This mic's a little low for me. Let me pick it up. That might be better. I'd like to just say that, first of all, what a great group of individuals here. Mary and Sarah, are you going to come up also? Are you not going to stay? Okay. Social workers are often to refer to as the link between the home, school, and community, and with that student and family focus squarely right in the middle. And so, they each day get to work with principals, counselors, staff, to support and promote each student's academic and social success. And I'm very proud of them for that. It's a very big honor for me to get to work with them each and every day. Ms. Mary Miller and Ms. Sarah Jones are back there. They are fantastic. I'm privileged to get to work alongside them every day as partners, and also, I'm grateful for all the contributions that they've made also. In addition, we have six here tonight of 10 of our social workers. We just rolled out our new t-shirts yesterday, correct, ladies? And you want to turn around and show them the back also? So, you can see the backs of them there. And then, also, I want to kind of go into what that means. That C stands for connect, which is connect with the community and resources and agencies and students and, for students and families. That A stands for the advocate, that they provide pathways and access to resources, rights, and opportunities to improve circumstances. That R stands for resolve, in that they have the resolve to help settle or find solutions to life's challenges. And let me just say, I mean, I work with them every day, and they solve a lot of problems for kids and families. I mean, a lot of issues. And that E stands for empower, that they work alongside students and families. And I think this, this may be the most important one for me because I shrink back to like 13-years-old when I think about this. And I was about this tall anyway, so maybe I didn't shrink, but I go back to when I was 13-years-old. Helping families, helping them become more independent, and so that they can stand on their own, so that families can become confident, students can become confident in what they do. And so, really, tonight, I just wanted to applaud all of these workers here, and Mary Miller and Sarah Jones, and just tell them what a great experience, what great things that they do for students in our Springdale schools. Right now, currently, we have 10 social workers serving 20 schools, and one half of a social worker on the way with the McKinney-Vento grant that's come forward. And so, again, I'll just applaud their work.
Okay. I'd like to talk to you just a few minutes briefly. You all have spent so much time with me over the last couple of weeks, especially talking about our tenure plan now into potential resolution for acceptance and submission to the state. But the current projects that we have going, we've had an ongoing SHS and harbor athletic field component. Those are in punch lists now. Archer's in punch lists now. We've, that means we're at the end of the project. So, we're working the end of the projects. We're working really hard to try to button those up. And so, we thank our partners with Flint Cohen Baldwin and Shell for all the work, all the way across, including Milestone as well, and our architects for all the projects we have currently. The, I think, I saw John back here, but we're getting close to being finished on the tennis courts and our new concession stand and ticket booth area there, so we're excited about that. We're also excited about our new school-based health center at Parson Hills. If you haven't had a chance to drive by, I know all of you are out and about. If you have a chance, we'll buy through there. It's going to look really good. We're excited about the tower that's going to go in and make Parson Hills just look like a new penny. So, that'll be a great opportunity for us. And then our biggest, our biggest program, building program right now is SOI Face2. And you've been through it, you've seen it, you've seen the size of it, and you've seen the scope of it. We had, I think I gave a tour to a River Valley school that came up on, was it Monday, Dr. Rollins? It's hard to, I guess it was yesterday. I don't know. Whatever today is, it was yesterday. And whenever, whenever it was. And so, we had a good time rolling through that, and they were very excited to see it and really understand the program of what happens at SOI. So, do you have any questions as far as current building projects? Okay. D, in my presentation, our tenure master plan, you've had two good work sessions to go over in details and in the weeds. I would ask you this evening, unless you have additional comments that you'd like to make about the tenure master plan with the resolution for a six-year plan, I'd ask you to consider that resolution. You have in your packet, pages 61 through 67, all the information that was presented to you that you discussed and went over on the two former work sessions. Nothing has changed in regard to what's been submitted to you for the consideration this evening. Dr. Rollins has the form that would need to be signed by himself, President of the Board, and I believe the Secretary for Submission. If you all would like to submit the plan. Mr. President?
I don't have any additional comments, of course. I just encourage anyone to vote. Shell, I hear Tom. Unless there's something that's changing.
No, we're, we're good to go. You've spent hours and hours on this at this point.
Yes, sir.
I believe we're on good terms.
So we have a motion by Mrs. Creek, and a second by Mr. Hudson, for the resolution for the...
Submission for the master plan.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Fantastic. That concludes my portion. I'll be happy to turn that into the state.
... Contractors, Dr. Stein, Dr. Rollins, everybody put the time together to put the information in front of us to understand the last steps.
It was a huge coordinated effort, but it is literally your plan.
I look at it as an opportunity to invest in the future. We have a lot of work to do as far as financing, and we have a whole lot of work to do.
Excellent.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Cleveland. Kendra?
Good evening. I've got a handout. The transfer list that was in your packet had one mistake on it. Student number 10 is actually requesting to leave the district. So this handout reflects that change. We get in such a habit of them coming into the district that when it was typed, we just missed it. So, you'll see the list of students that are requesting transfers this month. There are 12 students coming in from Fayetteville, one from Huntsville, three from Bentonville, and one from Mountain View. And then there is the one student that is requesting to transfer to Fayetteville. That student has a sibling that is already attending school in Fayetteville via school choice. The family thought they would be moving in time to not do school choice for this student, but as things happened with the move, they are still residing in our district but didn't want to split up siblings. So that is the reason for the transfer out. The student from Mountain View is SOI virtual student, so he or she is not, not making that drive every day. I'll be happy to answer any other questions you have. Otherwise, I'd ask that you approve these out-of-district transfers.
I make a motion that we approve the out-of-district transfers as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Cook, a second by Mr. Luttrell, to approve the out-of-district transfers into the district. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clay. Ms. Trace?
Good evening, Dr. Rollins, and members of the board. This evening, I have two items for your consideration. The first item is the budget for the 1920 school year. In preparing this for you, I tried to put notes throughout that would kind of explain anything that looked unusual. But basically, on the revenue side, we have a slight, I'm projecting a slight increase in local property taxes. And then, of course, the state aid, state equalization money went up. We never budget for student growth, so that's, even though we are up in our student enrollment this year. So that's, that's a difference from last year in that we receive student growth, which we will again this year, but y'all know what I'm saying. Anyway, so on the revenue side, you saw that it was pretty flat overall. And then on the expenditure side, the projected increase was approximately 8%. And I always go back and look at the prior year to see how we compare. This is pretty much, I think I said it mirrored last year. I don't anticipate our expenses growing by that amount, but I try to budget our revenue conservatively and our expenses a little the other way. So somewhere we meet in the middle, and it looks pretty good. So, if you have any specific questions, I'll be happy to try to answer those for you.
How are we going to reduce lunch?
That's a good question.
What was the question? I'm sorry.
We are reducing lunch.
Oh.
Yes. The deadline for, to qualify for the NSL or ESA funding is October the 1st. Of course, our students can turn in an application, or our family can turn in an application at any time, but we are really encouraging all of our families that qualify to turn them in now. We, the last time I checked, which was last Friday, we were at 55%, and we are working towards 70% is the magic number. So we're about 3,000 students away, a little over, from that number. This is typical. We typically see an increase in the last week or two, week or two, them really coming in. But we are taking all the steps that we know to make sure that parents understand the importance of that, that it helps not only their student, but it also helps our district as a whole.
We're on track with past years. We're about where we're...
We're a little behind where we were this time last year. We are. And so, we are going to be making a concerted effort from here forward. We understand the importance. Dr. Rollins helps me remember the importance on a daily basis of meeting that milestone. Really, we cannot afford to back up on this, so we will be doing all that we can to make sure that we hit it again this year.
I was just going to tell you, this is a fantastic job on the budget, making it really easy to understand.
Well, thank you.
So I was taking the first two pages and writing notes and doing calculations, and then I flipped a little further over, and you had all the calculations and all the notes.
Oh, well...
And it was awesome.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
So I think you did a great job. Like, every variance was noted.
Was he right?
Well, I don't know. I believe him.
Okay.
I do have a clarifying question, just for me.
Sure.
Does it, when does it go out of proposed, the terminology? It's proposed fiscal budget. Does it go...
When the board approves.
Right after this, so that proposed, this is what you're going to stick with?
Yes, we have to, it has to be submitted to the state by the end of the month.
Okay, by the end of this month.
I do have one question about a variance note you made. And, like, the ALE funding was down 678,000...
Yes, it was.
Because our enrollment was down.
Yes.
But would we expect that to come back up, since we have more room now?
Yes. Dr. Rollins and I have had these conversations as well. The drop in enrollment for ALE, from my perspective, and others may want to chime in here, we took a different model with our English, our language academy at Harbor. Those students, a number of them were exited out of that environment, and so by doing so, that lowered the number of students that qualify for ALE funding. That's the big change that I see. Dr. Smith?
It was also at the one Tyson, and also at George.
Oh, that's true. We had three of those. That's right. Mm-hmm. We sure did. Middle, junior high, and high. And we felt that it was in the best interest of the students to integrate them into the...
So now Kobe will just have to go gather up some more for Kendra.
Seamless.
Are there any other questions that I might could try to answer?
So we need a motion on the budget.
I make a motion that we accept the proposed budget for fiscal year 2019 to 2020 as presented.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mrs. Creek, and a second by Mr. Hudson, to accept the proposed fiscal budget for school year 2019, 2020. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. In anticipation of you approving this, and I thank you for doing that, I have the updated numbers in the August report as far as the budgeted revenue and the budgeted expenditures. And as you can see, now, I do, I do want to make sure, I noted it in your financial packet, but our debt payment is increasing this year significantly. This is not a surprise. We have been anticipating this, and it's at the 12 million level, which is where it's scheduled to stay through 2041, which is when our, that's how far out our debt goes at this point. So that is a major change there. But in looking at our, comparing our revenue to this time last year, we're just a little behind, but nothing I'm concerned with. And on the expenditure side, we're right in there where we were this time last year, so it's looking good at this point. Be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
I'll make a motion to approve the monthly financials as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Hudson, a second by Mrs. Cook, to approve the monthly financials. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Greg, Greg R. Kelly. It's unbelievable the amount of man-hours in this state town. Thank you for it. Chris, are you presenting tonight?
I'm going to try to do my best to fill in for Cory. It's her birthday today, and her family drove up from Wynne to take her to dinner, so I said, okay, I'll come fill in. I'll try to get this, Mr. Hayes, I'll try to make a C on this for you.
Okay. We're married again, as it should.
Yeah, I know. I know. I know. Actually, Cory didn't give me anything to say to you tonight. She let me have the subject matter...
She left you hanging. She did.
Yeah. My last day with the Arkansas Education Association will be October 4th, and I wanted to steal this opportunity without permission from Dr. Rollins, and I apologize, Dr. Rollins, for that. But I wanted to take a minute, so I'm probably going to get a D. And I wanted to say thank you, since this is my last opportunity. And I'm just hoping I can get through it. So I'm not going to turn around and look at these people. Those can't. I want to first thank Kendra. It's not easy to be a former teacher of first graders and read the law and half-discuss law with an attorney. But she made it always easy and fun, and we've laughed many times. Dr. Smith and I have worked many times together, and she's always been so kind to me. I didn't get an opportunity to work with Ms. Childress until now, but I have adored the time. Mrs. Tisher and I have only worked one or two times together, but I know that I would have enjoyed working with her. Jeremy and Alan have to put up with me at least two or three times a week. When it's been a bad day, Jeremy has a Diet Coke waiting for me. And when I got bad news for him, I bring him a Dr. Pepper, in case you need to know that. Jeremy and I started this, he started his job and I started mine about the same time. He has done tremendous work for you. Not that you don't know that. But there's a lot of work that goes on that you don't know about. And he's done a tremendous job. Five years ago, I got brought into an office right over there with Melissa Spence and sat down for what I thought would be a 20-minute, here's your new UNICEF director meeting. It turned into about an hour, hour and a half-long interview by Dr. Cleveland. And I call it an interview because, at first, I didn't know what to make of it. But now I know that he needed to know that I was an okay person to put into his schools. There's never been anyone be so kind to me than Jared Cleveland. I'm not a smart person. Just a first-grade teacher who took a job, but he always made me feel like I was doing the very best. And I did try to do the very best for these kids. And I appreciate, I appreciate it. Dr. Rollins, I appreciate your leadership and that you have always trusted me in your schools, and that you never wondered why I was doing anything because you always knew it was for the kids. And you all have always been so kind to me. Just by who we are, you should be opposed to me, and it's never been that way. Anytime I've come here, you've smiled, you've looked at me, you've shaken my hand, and I thank you for that. And these last five years have meant everything to me. And I just wanted to say thank you, and I'm sorry that I'm crying. I will make sure that the person who takes my position does everything that I'm doing, or I'll come back and get her.
There you go.
Thank you.
Good for you. Congratulations on your new job.
And that was an A. You don't have to let...
Meeting adjourned.
I'll have to drop the mic over there.
I know.